We did have an interesting evening with all the weather that we're having. A tree fell on some power lines, caused us to have to lose power and then shut it off again to get the tree off the lines, but we have the absolute best electric department anywhere in the world and they took good care of us and the power's back on and we're so appreciative of all those folks that work in all kinds of weather to make sure we have electricity here in Radford. We are going to start our regular meeting and we'd like to invite our commander for the VFW to come up and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll ask that you please join us in a moment of silence that you can use for silent prayer to prepare for the meeting or to reflect on the activities of our community. Thank you all very much. Counsel, we don't have the minutes from April 28th, but we will have those next time, so we will have those to take a look at, but tonight, we're not going to approve them. We will move on to citizen comments on public matters. We invite anyone to come out to share their thoughts with us on things that are important for the community to know about or things you would like us to be aware of. You can come down to the podium, please use the microphone, state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And we're getting our clock set up up here, so we should be good to go. Welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you, I'm Claudia Van Arsdale and we owned a business in Radford, BNC Unlimited, which was, we've retired. Anyway, I have been concerned, three and a half years ago, I brought up the conditions of the park and the fact I thought that we were using too much, using too much money to cut down trees that I found that weren't necessarily necessary to enhance the look of the park. There were other concerns that I had that I wanted to bring up tonight. The building inspector, there's falls at...
Will you get just a little bit closer to the microphone so we can hear you a little bit better? There you go.
There's been a building inspection that I wasn't, I didn't think was correct, having been in the business. There's been falls in the park, one man hurt himself, he fell and his hands were up like this, we drove by and he had blood. This was years ago and I brought it up. So, anyway, there, the visitor's center, I brought it up that it's only open Tuesdays and Thursdays from 10 to 2. I was torn down because they said we didn't have enough money. Now, this was years ago that I brought this up, so before we knew that we didn't have any money. And we had a visitor's center in the Glencoe, I was a docent for years there and I thought we did a great job. Having no one there is disappointing, especially when we have a sign says we are open and we're closed. The business tax problem, I read that we can charge more taxes on somebody, a business that's derelict and its looks and its appearance, let's go with that. And I'm sure everybody knows the one downtown business that really has been like that for years. Now, we have a lot of buildings that they really don't care if they rent because the owners live out of state and they don't care, they don't want to deal with having to deal with people and these properties. And I understand we do have a problem with getting employees to work in businesses. My granddaughter said she was working at a rabbinic and she said, "People don't want to work, students just don't want to work." And I found that disheartening because two businesses have went out of business because they couldn't find anybody to work. Students, buses, we need more people interested in Radford. I've been a citizen in Radford for 52 years and I love Radford and I want to help reduce problems and waste and I want to increase our attitude of how we feel about Radford. Oh, sorry.
You can finish your thought.
Anyway, I'm interested, I'm interested in putting us as the, I'm a bee person and I was at the farmer's market trying to get people interested in Mother's Day, I was giving out candy and different things and I was told I couldn't do that without a permit and insurance. I was giving away things, one of them was marigolds, marigolds keep mosquitoes away and they bring in bumblebees. And we have a beehive on the Radford College emblem, so I thought we could become a pollinator city, something to get a new attitude towards Radford that would be positive so that we can get people interested in Radford and businesses.
Thank you so much for coming down to speak with us this evening on a whole variety of things, we are appreciative. Our Parks and Rec director is here and certainly we are continuing to look at things in Biscid and along the Riverway and we appreciate all the things that you shared with us this evening. Thank you so much. Counsel, are there any other comments?
I really like the idea of the pollinator city, that's really, that's really creative and unique and certainly within our reach. And so even though there may be some components where maybe the answer was no, there will be an answer that's yes, so keep working with us and we have a lot coming up and we would love to further that. I think I speak for all of council, we appreciate your efforts and there's a way to give you that opportunity. Thank you, I appreciate it and I love your attitude.
Appreciate you coming out. Does anybody else have a comment for the public record that they'd like to come down and share? All right, seeing no one heading for the podium, we will close that portion of the meeting and we are going to move on to a very special presentation. Radford has the best water, that's a pretty simple way to say it, but it doesn't happen by accident. We have a wonderful water plant treatment director and he does an amazing job making sure that our water is not only safe, but it is great quality and for, I believe, the 12th year in a row, we have won the water treatment, Virginia Water Treatment Gold Award. And so we have representatives here from the Department of Health, come on down and you can share your story with us at the podium.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you so much for the opportunity to be before you and to recognize your water department for, my name's David Dawson, I'm with the Virginia Department of Health Office of Drinking Water and I'm the Chair of Virginia Optimization Program, which monitors the work of our water treatment plants. So I just want to share that optimization, what we look at is we look at the, the idea is that the plant can achieve a better, better performance than what's just required under the drinking water regulations. In other words, drinking water regulations are, your water is, it's good enough and it's safe, but if they meet the optimization goals, your water is excellent. And there have been studies that show that with optimized water performance and that reduces any public health risk beyond that, as well as some studies have also shown with the optimization, there's efficiencies in your expenditures and it doesn't mean you're not needing to spend money in water, but it means you're not spending it on things you don't have to. So I'm here very, very pleased for the, you said, was it the 13th year or 12? Anyway, it's, and just to have gone through, and what's kind of amazing is that the water treatment plant of your city maintained this even despite the impact of Hurricane Helene, which is, we have a number of treatment plants that are pulling from the New River and it's just a phenomenal job in 2024. So I do have a certificate and it is the, it's water treatment plant's performance for 2024 and it's excellence in clarification, filtration, and backwash, which are the components of the multi-barrier in the treatment process that protects your citizens and provides for, for safe health. So I would like to present this to Wade and to Brad and...
Let's come on down front and how about a round of applause for Wade and Grant and the whole team with the water department. Counsel, please join us down front.
You guys all are impressed, the whole team, that was...
I'll join into this.
It's team effort and we appreciate it. And I have to say, we had a wonderful celebration in Roanoke where the Department of Health invited Wade and staff team down to Roanoke and they represented us so well, other jurisdictions are jealous of how great a job the whole team does and we thank you again. Thank you so much.
Fantastic, good news for Radford and exciting that we have such good support from our team here in this community. We are moving forward to a number of proclamations for both May and into June and we're going to begin with one of my favorites, Flag Day, which is on June the 14th, celebration that commemorates the adoption of the flag of the United States in June of 1777 by the Continental Congress. And Kelly, I believe you have that one for us.
I do. Proclamation Flag Day 2025. Whereas we celebrate the enduring strength and promise that the stars and stripes on our flag have always embodied as they fly proudly across the country and around the world, and whereas our flag tells America's story, it is an emblem of strength at home and abroad, synonymous with America as a force for good in the world, and whereas the flag stands for hope, pride, and progress, it waves for justice and equality and it reinforces the promise of our democracy. And whereas our flag embodies the very soul of America, the soul that has endured because of sacrifices made by generations of Americans, whose mission we must keep alive to ensure democracy endures. The stars and stripes belong to all Americans and reminds us that much more unites us than divides us. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Radford does hereby proclaim June 14th, 2025, as Flag Day in the City of Radford and encourages the people of Radford to observe the day with pride as a time of honor, the American spirit, to celebrate our history and the foundational values we strive to uphold. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to adopt this proclamation.
We have a motion and do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, I hope you have a beautiful Flag Day, it is always so wonderful to see all the American flags out on Main Street and throughout all the neighborhoods in the community, absolutely fabulous. We are also looking to commemorate this week that we're currently in, May 11th through the 17th, which has nationally been designated as Police Week to honor the men and women who've made the ultimate sacrifice and to those who put their lives in danger each day protecting and serving our communities. We've got a proclamation this evening that has been prepared for us, recognizing Police Week. Seth?
Yeah, I just want to start by saying we have an excellent police chief and excellent men and women in our department and I know every single one of us appreciate everything you guys do. So with that being said, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Radford City Police Department, and whereas the safety and well-being of the citizens of Radford are of the utmost importance to the Radford City Police Department, and whereas individuals have committed their lives to protecting and serving Radford's families, businesses, neighborhoods, schools, and community, and whereas the men and women of the RCPD risk their lives in the line of duty to maintain the safety of our community while striving to uphold the rule of law, and whereas all citizens of Radford value the courage, commitment, and leadership demonstrated by our state and local law enforcement officers who work diligently to ensure our safety, and whereas we pay tribute to the officers who have fallen in the line of duty and recognize sacrifices made by the families of those officers, as well as the families of those who continue to protect and serve our communities, and whereas it is critical that we understand the roles and responsibilities of law enforcement officers within our communities and commemorate and pay tribute to the dedicated service of officers past and present. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Radford does hereby proclaim May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in the City of Radford and publicly salutes the law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. Mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to our officers, come on down front, we would love to present you with this proclamation. Coming up, the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, has been designated as National Emergency Medical Services Week to honor the men and women who serve in the field of emergency medical services, as well as to recognize the importance of out-of-hospital care, life-saving skills, training and education. We have a proclamation for that this evening. Jessie?
City of Radford Proclamation Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas the City of Radford is committed to ensuring the health and safety of all those living in and visiting Radford, and whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of Radford's Emergency Medical Services Team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the members of Radford's Emergency Medical Services Team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designated Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Radford does hereby proclaim the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Week, We Care For Everyone, and encourages the Radford community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Mayor and council, as a citizen that has relied upon their services for a loved one, I am quite honored to say that I fully back the proclamation and hope that the rest of council will as well.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have some of our wonderful Radford Fire and EMS team, come on down, let's give you a round of applause and present you with this proclamation. the men and women who serve in the public work sector as engineers, directors, supervisors, and employees. The theme for this year is People, Purpose, and Presence. The week highlights the public work services and preparedness related to day-to-day operational duties and the needs associated with repairing and improving transportation facilities, solid waste collection, maintaining public buildings, infrastructure oversight, treating and supplying water and wastewater services, as well as maintaining public places, structures, and facilities essential to our citizens for public health, quality of life, and overall well-being. We have a proclamation this evening, Guy.
A proclamation, National Public Works Week, People, Purpose, and Presence. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, emergency management, and services that are vitally important to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Radford, Virginia. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals and the engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, excuse me, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Radford to gain knowledge and maintain ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works employees and public works programs in their respective communities, and whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association slash Canada Public Works Association, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Radford City Council in the City of Radford that the week of May 18th through 24th, 2025 be known as National Public Works Week. And all citizens are encouraged to celebrate in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Mayor, I would move that we approve this proclamation.
Thank you, Guy, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. I know Wade, you are here, anyone else from Public Works want to come down and accept this? We appreciate you all so much. Come on down Wade, you'll represent the whole team today. Well, May is also Mental Health Month. The month focuses on the overall wellness and ways each of us can mitigate the impact of mental health challenges we may face in life by focusing on the components of wellness that are important to most of us. And I believe, Guy, you have this proclamation as well, if you'll please share that with us.
I do. All right. A proclamation, Mental Health Month. Whereas the City Council of the City of Radford does hereby recognize the month of May as Mental Health Month, and whereas the New River Valley Community Services is the area's leading public provider of behavioral health services to residents of the New River Valley, including those who live with mental health disorders, and whereas New River Valley Community Services provided services to more than 12,000 residents across the New River Valley during fiscal year 24, and whereas New River Valley Community Services has been promoting a wellness campaign to the general public since 2024, using inspiring messages of hope and encourage, to encourage, community members to patronize eight different components of well-being, including fun and recreation, family, physical health, career, friends, spiritual, personal development, and finance, and whereas each of us can mitigate the impact of mental health challenges we may face in our lives by focusing on the components of wellness that are most important to us, and whereas recovery from mental health disorders is possible and individuals living with mental health disorders can enjoy healthy and productive lives with proper treatment and support, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Radford that the month of May, 2025, be recognized as Mental Health Month in Radford. Mayor, I would also like to move that this proclamation be accepted.
Thank you, Guy, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. I know Wade, you are here, anyone else from Public Works want to come down and accept this? We appreciate you all so much. Come on down Wade, you'll represent the whole team today. The month focuses on the overall wellness and ways each of us can mitigate the impact of mental health challenges we may face in life by focusing on the components of wellness that are important to most of us. And I believe, Guy, you have this proclamation as well, if you'll please share that with us.
I do. All right. A proclamation, Mental Health Month. Whereas the City Council of the City of Radford does hereby recognize the month of May as Mental Health Month, and whereas the New River Valley Community Services is the area's leading public provider of behavioral health services to residents of the New River Valley, including those who live with mental health disorders, and whereas New River Valley Community Services provided services to more than 12,000 residents across the New River Valley during fiscal year 24, and whereas New River Valley Community Services has been promoting a wellness campaign to the general public since 2024, using inspiring messages of hope and encourage, to encourage, community members to patronize eight different components of well-being, including fun and recreation, family, physical health, career, friends, spiritual, personal development, and finance, and whereas each of us can mitigate the impact of mental health challenges we may face in our lives by focusing on the components of wellness that are most important to us, and whereas recovery from mental health disorders is possible and individuals living with mental health disorders can enjoy healthy and productive lives with proper treatment and support, now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Radford that the month of May, 2025, be recognized as Mental Health Month in Radford. Mayor, I would also like to move that this proclamation be accepted.
Thank you, Guy, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to our officers, come on down front, we would love to present you with this proclamation. Emergency Medical Services Week to honor the men and women who serve in the field of emergency medical services, as well as to recognize the importance of out-of-hospital care, life-saving skills, training and education. We have a proclamation for that this evening. Jessie?
City of Radford Proclamation Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas the City of Radford is committed to ensuring the health and safety of all those living in and visiting Radford, and whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of Radford's Emergency Medical Services Team are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And please do take time during the month of May to focus on your own mental health. I know there are plenty of times where I need to do that with all of the things that bring stress in daily life, and it provides an opportunity for us to be as healthy and well as we can. The month of June is nationally recognized as Pride Month. This proclamation that we have this evening recognizes the 1960 Wall Stonewall uprising in New York, advancing the LGBTQ movement and self-affirmation. Jesse, I think you have this proclamation for us.
I do, Mayor. City of Radford Proclamation, Pride Month 2025. Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month is celebrated each year in the month of June to commemorate the 1969 Stonewall uprising in Manhattan, New York, which sparked the movement for LGBTQ equality, and whereas Pride celebrations have evolved to highlight the modern LGBTQ rights movement, and whereas the purpose of this commemorative month is to recognize the hardships faced by the LGBTQ community, as well as the impact that the LGBTQ individuals have had on history locally, nationally, and internationally, and whereas Pride is a celebration of all LGBTQ community members who are an important part of the diverse tapestry of individuals and families that make up the City of Radford, and whereas the City of Radford recognizes that the struggle for equality and acceptance for LGBTQ people is advanced by the dedication of advocates and allies who promote tolerance and inclusion, and whereas the City of Radford continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity, are respected and recognized for their contributions and their potential, and whereas Pride Month encourages self-acceptance, tolerance, and open-mindedness. Now therefore, the City of Radford does hereby recognize the month of June, 2025, as Pride Month, and the City of Radford encourages Radford residents of all sexual orientations and gender identities to celebrate and reflect on the vital role Pride plays in building a community that is stronger, more diverse, and welcoming to all. Mayor and Council is an ally of the LGBTQ movement. I would ask that we all accept this proclamation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. Okay. Kelly, if you've got it, I'll let that be the second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. And hopefully throughout Pride Month, the citizens of the community will feel support from the community as they continue their daily lives. Moving forward, June 19th is nationally recognized to commemorate African-American freedom and the ending of slavery in the United States. That holiday emphasizes education, achievement, as well as a continued focus on addressing racial injustice in our society. We have a proclamation celebrating Juneteenth for 2025. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Liberation Day, and Emancipation Day, is a holiday celebrating the emancipation of those who had been enslaved in the United States, and whereas on June 19th, 1865, General Gordon Granger announced that slaves in Texas were free by the order of the President of the United States. The announcement came two and a half years after President Lincoln's Emancipation Proclamation, which had become official on January 1st, 1863. And whereas freedmen in Texas organized the first of what became the annual celebration of Jubilee Day on June 19th, and whereas June 19th has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas, the City of Radford encourages everyone to observe Juneteenth as an opportunity to reflect, rejoice, and plan for a brighter future as we continue to address racial injustices in our society today. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and the Bradford City Council that June 19th, 2025, be known as the Juneteenth Celebration in the City of Radford, and we urge everyone to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city. Council, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this proclamation. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations to our African-American community for the presentation of Juneteenth, and I hope everyone does get out to celebrate on June the 19th this year, here in the city and throughout the New River Valley. And we have one more proclamation for this month. May is National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all citizens to honor current and former members of the U.S. Armed Forces and their families, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice. The proclamation encourages citizens to express our gratitude and commitment to Radford service members, veterans, and their families who've dedicated their lives in defense of our freedoms. We do have a proclamation this evening.
Proclamation, Military Appreciation Month. Whereas for generations, the freedom and security enjoyed by the citizens of the United States are direct results of the continued vigilance and service of the United States' armed forces over the history of our great nation, and whereas the sacrifices of those who served, those currently serving, and the family members that support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched our great Commonwealth of Virginia and this nation, making it unique in the world community. And whereas, Virginia's military presence is significant and has a total economic impact of over $100 billion annually on our state, and whereas, Virginia is home to over 720,000 veterans and over 155,000 total active-duty service members, National Guardsmen, and reservists. And whereas, in 2004, the United States Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all citizens to honor current and former members of the U.S. Armed Forces and their families, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas, the month of May was selected for this display of patriotism because during this month, we celebrate Victory in Europe, VE Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, National Day of Prayer, and Memorial Day. And whereas, on this month and throughout the year, citizens of the Commonwealth express our gratitude and commitment to Virginia's service members, veterans, and their families who have dedicated their lives in defense of our freedoms. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Radford does hereby proclaim May, 2025, as Military Appreciation Month, calls this observance to the attention of our citizens. Council and Mayor Horton, I'd like to make a motion to accept this proclamation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And congratulations to all of our members of the military. We will be down at the Memorial Day Service and the dedication of our, I believe we're calling it the Tribute to Heroes this year at Glencoe Mansion on the Memorial Day Monday, and we hope that you will come out and celebrate, as well as all the holidays that were mentioned.
One o'clock.
One o'clock. And we'll be at 11 o'clock, I believe, for the Memorial Day Service in Visite Park. That does it for our proclamations. A lot of wonderful things happening in the months of May and June, and we're so appreciative of everyone for all they do to uplift and celebrate the citizens of the City of Radford in all their various walks of life. As we move into old business, I do have a statement that I need to share with the community as I do participate in the discussion, but through Mr. Bedd-Saul, our city attorney, we have checked with the State Council on Ethics and Conflict of Interest to ensure that my participation is accurate. So I work for Radford University. I earn a salary of more than $5,000, and this agreement is with the RUF Hotel Land LLC and the Radford University Foundation. The Radford University Foundation received some funds from Radford University as part of the construction of the hotel, and as such, I have a conflict of interest with the university participating. However, I receive no direct benefit, and the granting of any funds or grant have no impact on my salary, and therefore, I'm able to participate in the discussion per the State Council of Ethics and Conflict of Interest. So I just wanted to get that out of the way before we have the discussion on the Ready Grant. So the Economic Development Authority entered into a performance agreement a couple of years ago, dated January 1st, 2023, with the RUF Hotel Land LLC under the Ready, the Real Estate Development Initiative Grant Program. The EDA has completed its review of the request and determined the hotel, the Highlander Hotel, has met the requirements of the agreement for grant consideration for grant year number two. On February 20th, 2025, the EDA passed a motion recommending City Council consider appropriating funds in support of the Ready Grant Program in the amount of $128,686.37. At the March 24th, 2025 meeting, Council moved to table any action on this item until the May 12th, 2025 meeting. Now, part of the reason that was tabled was to give an opportunity for the EDA and for the RUF Hotel Land LLC and the Radford University Foundation to have some discussion about possibilities for the grant and to continue to have discussions. Such discussion has happened, and continues to take place, and continues to move us forward. One of the concerns that we on a council have is being able to support this grant, given the current fiscal challenges the city is facing and working to address some of that. And so I will open up the floor for discussion as we consider the Ready Grant for 2025.
Mayor, I would ask that we table making a decision on this, since there's still active communication and finding a resolution.
Okay.
I'm comfortable moving forward with it, but if the rest of Council would like some time for further discussion, I will second your motion to table it, even though I have information that I need.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion regarding the grant? Did you want to say a few words on behalf of the EDA? You're more than welcome to.
Yeah. I just wanted to address something that you just said that the EDA, so I'm Jeff Cumberland, I'm on the EDA board, that you mentioned that the RU Foundation and the EDA were going to have continued discussion. We have had no further discussion after we made our, I guess, approval that they had met the requirements of the performance agreement. It was not that we recommend City Council do it, it's just the fact that the requirements have been met based upon the performance agreement. So there have been no further discussion. So just wanted to state that.
Well, and we hope there will be further discussion as this goes on. I know city staff has had discussion with the foundation representatives.
That might be true, but you stated that.
Sure.
Right. Okay.
Okay. So city staff has had discussion, and that conversation is ongoing at this time.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And we will consider this at the June meeting. I do believe a vote will probably be taken at that point in time, but we appreciate any discussion that's able to be taken place, and staff can work with directors of the EDA to have further discussion, as well as with the Radford University Foundation, to move forward.
And I just want to add, in that June, that meeting, I will not stall a vote for further communication either. That communication happens one way or the other, but I feel that at the next juncture, we're going to have to make a decision.
Okay. Thank you all very much. All right. Moving forward, we do have some new business to discuss, and the Radford Recreation Commission has proposed several rate increases for fiscal year 2026. They're outlined in the resolution, and Charlie Goins is here with us this evening. Charlie, thank you for being here. Would you like to come up to the podium to share some of your thoughts and to answer any questions Council might have regarding the rate proposals from the Recreation Commission?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. These were some things that we were looking at that I took to the Rec Commission. As we go down the list, I believe everybody has it, the first one is just adding three fields for rentals. Was not on there in our pricing. It only lists one field and two fields. So most tournaments that we're looking to bring back to the City of Radford, they use three fields. And so I just want to make sure that we got that and there with that. The other thing that I'm looking to, or the Rec Commission voted to approve on, was changing our rental agreements to category one and category twos. And what that is, is on the facility use agreement, I have that listed on what the difference is. So a category one is local civic-based, faith-based, private schools and nonprofit organizations. Anyone that has a 501(c)(3) gets the category one rate. Category two, businesses, other contracted organizations, individuals or groups, they would be a category two. So we want to make sure that all nonprofits and everything are still getting the better rate for our fields as well. Also, we're changing it to $25 an hour for category one instead of $25 for hour and a half. Most places use two hours for practices, not three. They're like, I don't want to pay for three. So we just changed it to one hour instead of hour and a half. Then the category two rate would be $40 an hour. Another thing that we're looking to do is change shelters from weekends rates and weekday rates. It's just going to be a shelter fee rate. The other thing that we're looking at as well with that, we've had some people ask for, well, why do I need to pay a half a day when I don't use it for a half a day? So one thing that I've done in other localities where we've been at is put it on a three-hour block and change everything that sets to a three-hour block. We would be able to, they would go in to choose what time they were looking for, that time would be blocked, and then people that want the same day would be able to see what's available and what's not available. We're not going to set it as you got to have it at nine, or 12, or three. We would add hourly time rates. They would choose their three-hour block, and then anybody else looking at same day would be able to see what's already being rented. Excuse me. So that would be for resident would be $20 for three hours, and non-residents $25 for three hours on the three-hour blocks. Full-day rate, if they want to still do the full-day, residents would be $60, non-residents would be $75. One of the biggest things that I got hit with day one, when I walk through the door, is people say that, why do we not have a one-month membership? They would like to have a one-month membership. One-month membership. Numerous people came to me about one-month memberships. So I started looking into the memberships, and we offered three, six, and 12. But there's no incentive to get to six-month compared to a 12-month. It was the six-month was a double of the three. The 12-month was a double of the six. There was no incentive. So what I proposed, or the council voted on to propose, was we would do the one-month memberships, but eliminate the three-month membership. We did the pricing to where the six-month membership pricing would not change, and we based off of that. The 12-month membership, we actually dropped the price to give that incentive for people to have the longer. And just to break the numbers down a little bit for you, three-month memberships just for single adults for the 2024, we had 37. 12 of those renewed two to four times. So people are already using the 12-month membership, at least a third of them, but there's no incentive, so they want to just keep paying every three months. So three-month family memberships was 11. Half of those, five, were renewed two to four times. Three-month senior memberships, 74. Again, a third of that, 26 was renewed two to four times, and the three-month couple memberships, 13. Again, a third of that, four of them renewed two to four times. Your six-month memberships for adults, two. No renewals. Six-month family memberships, one. Six-month senior memberships, 20. Renewals out of the 20 was six, so they're already doing their 12-month right there for a 12-month membership. Six-month couples, five. Out of the five, three of them renewed for another six months. So they would be able to benefit with the new proposals for the 12-month to get a cheaper price. And your 12-month memberships, adult zero, family zero, 12-month memberships for seniors, 14, and 12-month senior couples memberships, 11. So I really believe those numbers would grow with the new pricing. The other thing that we're looking to offer with the membership changes is when the, with the new budget, the agreement with the Christiansburg Aquatic Center was one of the things that got cut from the budget. So one thing that I'm looking to add to help with the benefit, to accentify, to make this one of the incentives, is for the six-month membership, if you purchase a six-month membership, we're going to give you a visit to the Christiansburg Aquatic Center once a month for your six months. For the 12-month, we're going to give you a visit once a month for your 12 months. With the price rates increase from the Christiansburg Aquatic Center, my original idea was, I was wanting to include that with the six-month and the 12-month. But with their price increases, that price will be more than our membership. But with their price increases, that price will be more than our memberships. So we had to go back and revisit that. So I believe with this and the Rec Commission thought that that was a fair adjustment to that.
Can I pause you for one second on that? For all those memberships, that's the non-resident fee, correct? Because residents are free.
Correct.
And so as of right now, we don't have a solution for residents for the aquatic center within the structure.
The residents would stay the same. Now, the residents, even though they're doing, they get there daily for free, they could still purchase a six-month, and they would get that with that.
Right.
I mean, so.
Okay, thank you.
Gym rentals. One thing that I noticed in the gym rental fees, non-residents, say a travel team wanted to use the gym, they would sign up, non-residents come in, they pay their $4, and they're able to practice with their team. My thing is, if you're able to pay for your travel team, for your child to play on a travel team, that travel team needs to rent that gym space. If you don't want to have them pay for that gym space, play rec sports. Come sign up for recreation basketball. But if you're going to play for a travel, I feel that travel team, just like on the outside with baseball and softball, they should pay for that gym rental fee. And so I proposed to keep the regular rate that we have there for that, that all travel teams would have to pay the hourly rate for that instead of the $4 for the non-residents. And the last one is I was getting a lot of pushback from citizens about the rate increase to $8 last year. While it wasn't pickleball increased. I agree. I believe if we're going to raise the rate, it needs to be across the board, be uniform across the board. So I think pickleball should go up to $8, just as everyone else is. So those were the reasonings and everything with all of that.
Appreciate all that. Seth, you're our representative on Rec Commission, anything else you want to add?
No, I think this is well thought out, and you've been able to explain it very well. So I appreciate you taking the time to, along with commission, to be able to dive into this and present this. So I appreciate it, and it looks good as far as I'm concerned. So thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, first off, thank you. This is wonderful, and you've hit the ground running, and I really appreciate all the hard work you've done. Being someone that plans events on a pretty regular basis, I was just thinking through the rental spots that you have for the spaces at the park. So if they're three-hour increments, is it going to impact the employees having to go down there and make sure that people have left and clean trash out? Is that going to be something that the people that are renting it are required to do, like take the trash out and put a new bag in, or?
It would be in the agreement that they would sign, that they would clean up.
So there is something that holds them accountable for?
Yes.
Okay, great.
But we would also have park aides, you know, do drive-bys just to see if there's anything that needs to be touched up before that next, especially if we have another group wanting to come in behind them.
Okay, and there's, you know?
And we have, we have blocks to set in to that, you know, say someone rents it at 12 o'clock, their three-hour block ends at three, that next available block's not going to go in until four.
Oh, good, okay.
It gives 30 minutes.
That makes me feel a little better about that. Okay, well, good. Sounds like you thought of everything, thank you.
I'm trying.
And I was just going to point out, you know, I'm trying to get away from when we say that, well, it's free to residents. It's not free to residents, residents are paying for this. And so it is important that we make sure that when non-residents come in, that they're paying a portion of utilization, because it's not just the day-in, opening the door and shutting the door, there's a lot of maintenance involved and updating of equipment. So I appreciate you reviewing this, and I'd like to make sure that when it does come to non-residents, that we are staying as competitive as possible, knowing we're also competing against other gyms in the area. But I just always feel like we need to point out that, you know, we pay for that. This is one of the benefits that we all pay for through taxes. It's free when you go to use it, but it's something that we all contribute to, to have in the community.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead.
And I assume all the reservations, whether it's citizens or non-residents, first come first, sir?
Yes, sir.
Anything else? All right, thank you so much, Charlie. And at this time, we will accept a motion to adopt the resolution for the recreation fees.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you all very much. We are moving on to our Community Development Block Grant. Radford is a recipient of CDBG funds every year, and we are looking to make an amendment to the 2024 Action Plan to reallocate funding initially to be spent on the East Main Connector Trail, which will be spent by the wastewater department on a sewer line project on Stockton Street. There are some other additional planned components, and so Melissa's here to kind of step us through that. Melissa, if you'll take the wheel.
Thank you. Appreciate your time this evening, as, and I apologize, I was just looking at the amendment first. Perfect, thank you so much. Prior to that, I thought, since there were some of you who weren't as familiar with this Community Development Block Grant, excuse me, program, I thought I'd go over a little bit of what, where it comes from and who ultimately oversees it. So this is a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Program, and they award federal funding for localities to address housing and community development needs that benefit low to moderate income individuals. As an entitlement community, which Radford is, we receive funds through the CDBG program. This is done through the development of five-year consolidated plan, which was most recently done in 2022. So we're in this five-year plan, so this is our fourth year within our five-year plan. The consolidated plan identifies and prioritizes the city's housing and community development needs and sets that five-year goal for the duration of that grant. Each year, we're required to submit an annual action plan. So that action plan outlines all the activities that we're looking at doing throughout that next program year, which is July 1st through June 40th of each year. And it's just a pathway of showing how we're going to implement the funds and making sure it is lined up with a consolidated plan that we have already approved for that five-year Some of all CDBG activities have to be aligned with one of three national objectives set by HUD. They have to benefit primarily low to moderate income individuals, households or neighborhoods. They have to prevent or eliminate slum and blight and address urgent community development needs. HUD's definition of moderate income is no more than 80% of the area median income adjustments for household size. For a family of four, a household of four, that 80% of that is 80,300. So we have some programs, if you meet those guidelines of a family of four, you're able to be eligible for some of the programs that we have, specifically our emergency home repair program. Some of the historic activities that we've done over the years, and I apologize, we have been entitlement community since 2004. So I overtook, I took it over in 2008, so it almost feels like my baby by now, but we've been able to do a lot of activities. Some of those include Carson's Courtyard, we've utilized funding for blight for Carson's Courtyard, and most recently, a collaboration with the EDA on the Triangle Plaza. We've done a number of emergency home repairs. I looked at some of the data earlier today, and I think to date, we've done about 55 homes and helped a number of our members of our community be able to stay within their homes and make some permanent upgrades to allow them to have a, keep their house in tidy order. We've done to replace roofs, water sewer lines, heat pumps, broken windows, as well as we've recently implemented the weatherization program, knowing how cost of utilities continue to rise, we felt that this was an important aspect of the program to implement. We've also supported EDA's pot program, so anything in the facade, so we're, we've been able to do that over the past few years. We have done a number of construction and public facility projects, we've done some ADA improvements, accessibility improvements at the treasurer's office, we've done a number of water and sewer line replacements, sidewalk replacements. We've invested a lot in our parks, you know, a lot of our replacement and accessibility equipment for children, playground equipment. We've supported our Tree City USA designation. And then, of course, 15% of our yearly allocation can be awarded to subrecipients. So we have nonprofits in our community, specifically, some of the ones we have regularly supported is the Women's Resource Center, New River Community Action, our August Kids, our Beans and Rice, no longer Beans and Rice, but historically, Bobcat Backpack Program, and Radford Failon Daily Bread. So we have done a lot with the funding that we receive. If you have any questions on the background, I'd be more than happy to sit down and explain more of it, but really, it's been a good program that helps a number of people. And one of the benefits of the city, to be able to utilize the funding, the university students are accounted as part of our LMI, so that number, because the students don't have much income, it kind of helps us be able to utilize the funding throughout the whole city versus just in neighborhoods. Most communities have to really designate it to blocks in specific neighborhoods to be able to use the funding. If that was the case for Rad, for the city, all our funding would pretty much be around the university. But since we're able to meet that threshold of 50, more than 54%, we can utilize it anywhere within our community. With that being said, the amendment, our current year, which is program year 24, we are requesting to do the amendment because we have, over the past three years, program year 22, no, 21, 22, and 23, we have allocated funding towards the East Main Connector Trail. With that project being on hold, I'm, you know, it is my, you know, my job to make sure that we're spending all the funding that we are allocated in a timely manner. So my concern with us pausing that project, that we will not be able to utilize that fund in that timely manner that's set out. We've used a number of the funding, most of the funding for 20 program year 22 and 23, yes, 22, no, 21 and 22, my apologies, we used most of the funding for program year 21 and 22. Program year 23, I'm requesting that we reduce that funding to zero, we'll take that $65,000. In program year 24, we had a 17th Street water sewer line replacement and extension, and that came in significantly under budget. And one of the benefits of having the work done in-house to our, thankful to Don Green and his crew, it came in significantly under budget. So I am requesting that that money get reduced or rolled over into this project to be able to help support the replacement of that sewer line that Don's crew is working to replace from the sinkhole. So here we are, trying to figure out, how do we get, make sure our funding is spent in a timely manner, because we are required, we're required every year, I've got to show HUD that, yes, we have spent a certain, more, you know, more than 1.5% of our yearly allocation. It was very tight this year, and certainly, we're more under the pressure, not knowing what the future of some of the programs will be. We don't know, you know, what we'll be having for next year's allocation. So with that being said, we had to have a 30-day public comment period, which ends on Wednesday. I wanted to provide another opportunity this evening for anyone who had questions and concerns about making the amendment to the action plan. And to date, I have not received any comments to my office. So if you have any questions or if I need to clarify anything that I just went through on the amendment, I'd be happy to, to share and clarify.
So just for clarification, you were taking funds that were allocated for the East Main project?
Correct.
We are rerouting those to the Stockton Street project?
Correct.
Yeah, well, well, thank you for your work on this. I think we've mentioned several times how we are looking to really focus on some of our, our infrastructure and, you know, that, that meets this goal, and that the fact that this was able to fall into it was huge. So I appreciate all the effort to do that.
Thank you.
Does this impact any of the things that we've already expended for the East Main project? I know we bought lights that we put on order, does this impact that at all?
Actually, the lights that we put on order, we did not quite get that order in. What we did is we scaled it down, and lights will be replaced or put in the median that was down north of Harrison Street. So that will be done. There is some electrical components to it that we have purchased, but as I said, this project's on hold, and we are going to look forward to be able to, to ramp it up in the future, and hopefully...
So the remainder of the lights weren't ordered then, is what you're saying?
They were not, no.
Okay.
So, and, and which is, which is better for us at this point in time, that it was not. What we will do is reevaluate, you know, the program's still here, we will, once the city's in a position to be able to move forward with that project, we'll go ahead and, and reapply another allocation towards that activity.
And mayor and council, I would, I would like to commend Melissa and Don Green both, because as we realized that, you know, these CDBG funds are basically use them or lose them, and when we realized that this East Main Street project was going to pause, Melissa came to me and said, you know, that's freeing up some money. And they immediately started having a discussion, and this will let those funds be used for a very needed project to get that completed. So I appreciate, appreciate their efforts on that.
Yes, thank you on that. So do we need to hold our public hearing this evening or at our June meeting?
It's not a public hearing, it's a public comment.
Just public comment time.
Yeah, we just provide an opportunity for anyone to come and speak on behalf, whether or not they have any concerns.
Okay, so we will open the floor to talk about the amendment, at least, if anybody has anything they'd like to ask or state as part of that. Seeing no one rushing to the mic, why don't you talk about the 2025 Action Plan?
Thank you. As I mentioned, or may have, may have mentioned, to date, we have not received our actual allocation from HUD. Normally, we do, that's still, we're hoping by the 15th, we'll have some guidance on how to proceed moving forward with that. But we still have to create and get our actual action plan approved. So what they have guided us to do is to base our next year's program activities based off of program year 24's funding. So it's based off of what we received last year, which is 172,251, and then I'm estimating an additional 29,000 of program, of funding that, on activities that we're going to be able to close out and reapply and roll over to this current year. Once we receive notification on our actual allocation, I do need to mention that all the estimated funding levels will be proportionally increased or decreased according to what those numbers come in. So that gives me the opportunity to present this, we can approve it, and once they let us know, we can actually submit our action plan, because they are, we're all under a timeline of when we can actually, when that has to be submitted. Again, looking at some of the priorities in some of the infrastructure things that we have going on in the city that we need to really have addressed, I am, recommend putting some, another additional 20,000 towards emergency home repair. 137, there's a pretty significant water line that needs to be replaced on Grove, and Don and his crew can get this done with this amount of funding, so we are recommending that. As I said earlier, 15% of our allocation can go towards public service, so I have the 25,800 dispersed between five of our 501(c)(3)es, and then we put a little bit towards general administration of the program. I am finalizing the zoning ordinance, so I've held a little bit of money to try to pay for that, and as well as any, any conferences I have to go to for HUD, because those are mandatory.
All right, thank you. Are there any comments from the public regarding the 2025 Action Plan? Council, do you all have any questions or comments?
Do you do, put all this together yourself, Melissa, or is there a group of you?
We have, we do public inputs. I've reached out to all the departments to try to see how, are there any projects that, that they could, they, they could use support in? But we have public input meetings and try to get the community's input. We really do try to get as much input from, from them as possible. Sometimes we get some, sometimes we get none, so. Sometimes we get some, sometimes we get none, so. Yeah. And, and our allocation, you know, it's really not a lot to be able to do lots of different projects. So we really do try to hone in some of the, of the ones that we know we can first be able to complete in a timely manner so we can make sure the funds are actually being utilized and not held over from year to year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to say that I think this presentation meets a lot of, of the things that we're looking to do. We do have aging infrastructure and some things that really need attention. So I'm really happy with this and I appreciate it, Melissa. I mean, I, I know that it'll serve not only our citizens, but our business community and being able to use those, utilize those outside funds to really address some of our urgent needs is, is, is awesome. So thank you for that.
Well, I know water and sewage is not as sexy as the Triangle Project, but here we are. So you probably know after this many years what I'm going to ask about. The emergency-
Home repair.
Yep. The emergency home repair, because I ask about it every year. Where, have we, have we found people are utilizing that?
I'm actually on my fourth, fourth house this year, so.
Wonderful. I know we were trying to get more people to participate.
And, and not only is it hard finding qualified homeowners, because of course, they need to meet, they need to qualify to be able to, to utilize the program, but also finding qualified and qualified contractors who are licensed and certified, who's wanting to work with us to, to work through the program. Because it's not, it's not very, it's not easy. I mean, you do have to have steps and I have guidelines on A to ensure that they are, they properly pay their employees. So it's a little bit of a hurdle.
I remember it being a process. So I, I wanted to just ask if maybe at some point we can schedule for her to come in and talk about eligibility, because I, I think there's a lot of misconception about that. So if we could talk about the eligibility and process to apply and, you know, you could, we don't have to do that tonight, but I would really, I'd like to let the public know that we're doing that, because I think there might be more people interested that might tune in.
And that's why I provided, and I apologize for not, for not having the technology. But for a family, for, if you make 80,300 or less, you qualify.
Yeah, that's, that's wonderful. But if we could maybe instill, just have a quick summary of just that process, eligibility without like all, all of this stuff that apply more to, but just the eligibility and the process to apply. And then also to highlight the POP program again, just for businesses and for all of us to, to be able to advocate to another separate little communication on what that looks like, who qualifies, what they have to do to qualify.
Kim and I can get together and put something in, you know, and do a collab on that. And just so everyone knows, on, on the community development page on the city's website, there is a tab for CDBG and it does provide the application, the program guidelines for the emergency home repair program.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion to go on and adopt both the amendment and the program year 2025 action plan? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for all the hard work. We do have an appropriation ordinance to consider, 1802.29, the Versa Risk Sharing Grant. Each year, the Virginia Risk Sharing Association distributes risk management grants to members expanding their risk management programs. The funds are to be used to purchase safety equipment, attend training sessions, and for special education endeavors aimed at broadening member understanding of governmental management. Radford received $5,000 this year. The grant is administered internally by the Safety Committee and is used to fund training for the wastewater department, water-resistant microphones for the police department. So Mr. Meadows, you have anything to share on that or is that pretty much sum it up?
You, you nailed it, yes, sir.
All right, I can read, yay. We have appropriation ordinance, 1802.29, and the amount of $5,000. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Having heard four affirmative votes, we can dispense with a second reading if so desired. Is there a motion to do so? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, this has been an interesting meeting. Mr. Manager, what do you have for us?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I do have a few things to mention this evening. First, I wanted to share with everyone that work has begun on transferring the information from the Treasurer's IBM AS400 system to the city's Munis Accounting System. This has been a, a project that has been discussed many times over the years. We have had several meetings with Munis and with the Treasurer and city IT staff. Appreciate all the efforts that everyone's gone to, to, to get this long overdue issue addressed. I, I did want to mention as well that I have personally been on, on two meetings with the leadership group at Munis that is helping coordinate this. For the public, Munis is the software that all the city's accounting systems run on. The Treasurer has had a separate system for a number of years on an older system that as of the end of September, software will no longer be supported for that system. So it's a situation where it, it's very timely that this transfer of information takes place. We'll certainly keep you updated on that, but that is something that we appreciate the Treasurer's cooperation as long, and as well as our IT staff. It's, we're, we're going to make it happen. So got that moving forward.
Thank you for shepherding that process for us. We appreciate that.
It's, it's, it's challenging any, you know, I'll just say this in general, anytime you, and I know Kelly, under, Councilmember Altrip understands this, anytime you are converting from one system to another system, even when things are just perfect, it's a challenge. And in this particular situation, the AS400 is an old IBM operating system and it, it, it's going to take some work to get that done, but we're committed, the city staff's committed to get that done, Munis is committed to seeing that happen. And I appreciate the Treasurer's willingness to work to get that done as well. So that's moving forward. Couple of meetings this week, joint commission meeting is tomorrow. Councilmember Altrip and I will be there for that. And also, I wanted to remind everyone of the ribbon cutting for the renovated and new animal shelter facility. That will be on Wednesday at 10:30 a.m. I think originally there was some, it was, it was originally scheduled for 10 a.m., but due to some scheduled conflicts, we have moved that to 10:30 a.m. So I hope to see everyone there. That's a wonderful facility and it was an opportu, you know, as I've said with Hurricane Helene, Charlie and I have talked about this several times, the hurricane presented the city with some opportunities to make improvements. And so we've made an improvement there. We'll have Charlie back at a, at a future meeting to really talk about some of the things that are going on with the rec facilities. A lot of improvements are going on there. It's slow, it's expensive, but we're getting those things done as well. Last thing I wanted to mention is we are still working to identify a date for the June meeting. Originally, we had talked about June 23rd. Then we had talked about June, well, June 23rd was the original scheduled meeting. We moved it to June 9th, there's some conflicts there. We've also with year-end finance-related issues and, and some activities there, we, we may need to move that to a separate date. We're still working with the attorneys to make sure we, we get that down, but we'll have further communication later this week as to when the June-
So we're not ready to set a date tonight?
I don't think so. We want to, and the date that, that floated out towards the end of the day today was June 16th, but we've still got to make some confirmations.
I can't do June 16th, I have Boise State.
Then that's not going to work either.
June 2nd, I think, is the only other date if we have to do it before the 23rd.
And the challenge with June 2nd is that doesn't give sufficient time for some advertising that needs to be done. So we'll figure it out.
So I know that we don't typically do a, a meeting off a day that's other than Monday, but due to the circumstances, can we do it on another day other than Monday, that one meeting to handle that topic?
Counsel?
I think you could schedule, you know, this is a special meeting on whatever day that you, you wish.
What day will you be back, Guy?
When did I say 15?
So I could do the 17th, I can't do the 16th. I could do the 17th or 18th if people are available those days.
I will make myself available for either.
I'll make myself available.
Yeah, 17, 18.
Figure out how to get to yes.
Yep.
Well, thank you for that. We, we, we will look at the 17th or 18th and see what we can figure out.
If we can get that scheduled in the next couple of days, because I don't like to leave that hanging for folks.
Absolutely.
Does that mean we would move the entire meeting to that day? Is that the plan? Okay, just want to make sure. Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Guy, what do you have for us this evening?
I have nothing.
Okay. Kelly, what do you have?
I don't have a whole lot. I have a whole lot of thank yous. Thank you very much for coming in and speaking and letting us know your concerns. We definitely will appreciate you coming up and saying those things. Thank you to the police officers, the EMS, the water department, the electrical department for, you know, getting our electricity back on for our meeting today. We, I think we all agree that we have, you know, the best services and people working that we can, so I appreciate everybody doing that. I wanted to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. I know I should have said it last time, but I'm getting it in now. And thank you to everybody that served in our military and also thank you to those who they leave at home behind to keep everything together. Those people also work very hard to keep everything going. Charlie, thank you very much. I know I said it before, but I really appreciate everything you're trying to do for our, our rec center and make everybody happy. I know that's difficult. I think we all agree that you can't make everybody happy, but I appreciate your efforts. Melissa, you are a rock star, like you just blow me away at all the hard work that you do. I really appreciate, I'm, you, Melissa. See, you're not even wanting to take credit. No, I just, I appreciate everything you do. You work very hard. I know. You work very hard at Joint Commission, you work very hard in, in your, in your job, always looking to make sure that we can, you know, save a penny or do things a little bit more efficiently. So I just really appreciate you and everything that you do. And thank you to Janet. I, the bank that I work at is going through a core conversion, meaning we're changing our whole computer system. And I know how difficult that is firsthand. We've been working on it for a year now. So I just want to say a special thank you to you and your staff. I know it's really difficult and it probably seems like there's no light at the end of the tunnel, but there is. And I hope that everything will be better and more efficient when you get there, even though it's tough now. So that's all I've got. I've got Joint Commission tomorrow, so I will report back after that next meeting.
Thank you. Jessie, what do you have?
Well, I just want to say ditto. So that, that, thank you. That's exactly right. Thank you to all those folks. I just wanted to remind everyone about the farmer's market. I was there on Saturday and I, I purchased plants, empanadas, veggies, I got one of everything. Oh, and, and a lot of bread. I got a lot of sourdough bread of varying flavors. Love the idea of Pollinator City. I think that we need to figure out how to make that happen. That's such a great idea. So we may want to make sure that we have your number so we can get ahold of you, because that's what happens. Then we're going to, we're going to rope you in and use your knowledge to help us with that. I did attend the CPMT meeting and I did share this with Craig. This is tentative, because of course, the, the budget that we put forth for this is to help children in our community that are in need of additional services. As of right now, it's not the end of the year, so again, knock on wood. We are below budget, so I'm very hopeful that we may be able to roll some of that money back into, into the fund. We'll see, but as of right now, that could change at any moment. Right now, we're, we're doing okay. I want to remind everyone about the Chamber Golf Outing on the 19th, should be a good time. They may or may not let me do a golf cart. I may just have to ride. I drove a couple of times. I'm not sure that they enjoyed that as much as I did. Out front, you'll see there are some paperwork, so you can either sponsor a tribute to heroes or you can buy a flag for a loved one. We are on Memorial Day, opening up at 1 o'clock with that. We'd love to see everyone there. Again, if it's something you want to participate in, you can get the forms out front. You can look at the Rotary or Glencoe, there's lots of opportunities, just go on one of those sites. And there's also, we have advanced ourself to QR codes, so I'm very excited about that new technology we're, we're experimenting with. If you have any questions, you can always email me here. You can find me on my government email site. So that's about all I have. And just to thank this council, we've had a lot of long days and hours together and I'm very proud to be serving with this group. We, we, you, you bond under fire. So thank you again for everyone.
Thank you, Jessie. Seth, what do you have?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with a ditto to a lot of what's been said, but I wanted to start by thanking our water department, Wade, and we, you're not going to find a better water department and water quality in the New River Valley. You guys do an excellent job and get a gold star. We're very blessed for, for, for you guys and all the work you do. And I could say that about a lot of our departments, most all of our departments. We were, we're blessed with some good people. We were, we were able to have a ribbon cutting for Blue Gorilla Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, so I wanted to welcome them to the business community and wish them all the best. And they've taken a building that's set pretty much vacant and dilapidated from the 80s and made it a really cool place. And, you know, it, it'll have a, hopefully have a trickle-down effect to other buildings. So I was really glad to see that and wish them all the best. Jessie mentioned it, but May 19th is the Chamber Golf Tournament. I hate that I'm going to miss it this year, but it's a, it's a great event. Dan and the Chamber do a very good job with it. I'm excited that the river course is recovering from Helene. They were hit really, really hard. So good for them, if you can support them, get back on their feet, I encourage you to do so. I also wanted to thank Melissa and Don Green for, for being creative and helping us really address some needs that really need it with some of the funds that are available to us. You always work hard and, and it's, it's noticed in a time of need, stepping up and helping us reach some of our goals. So I just want a heartfelt thank you from all of us that we, we appreciate, appreciate that and it's good to know you're in the foxhole with us, helping us get through this. Charlie, I want to thank you too for your presentation. It was great and it's nice that, we've been blessed with some great rec directors and it's always good to get some, some perspectives from people that have been other places and incorporating those good ideas. And I know that that's what you're doing. So we're, we're very fortunate to have you and thank you for all that you're doing. So yeah, I think I'll, I'll, I'll just kind of end with same as Jessie, is, you know, we're working hard to, to put our citizens first and, and to really make some hard decisions and to get some places. And we're, we're meeting with prospective candidates and things are going well. So I appreciate all council's efforts. I know that we've, we're, we're working hard and we put a lot of hours into it and we're getting there. So thank you.
Thank you. And Seth, I want to say congratulations on receipt of your brown belt for your jiu-jitsu. That's fantastic. You know, put it on a demo for us one night and we'll go from there. There you go.
You have to pay for that.
Oh. Yeah, there you go. We'll sell tickets. I, I do want to thank everybody for all their participation with everything. This has been an exceptionally busy time in so many ways and we continue to be just inundated with all kinds of good and challenging things. This past weekend was commencement at Radford University. There were about 10,000 people at the ceremony itself. It was one of the largest crowds that has been there in probably the post-COVID era, so that is a very good news piece for our community. 1,400 new graduates, many of whom are actually staying locally and regionally to serve people in this area, whether they be teachers or nurses or police officers or other folks from the Radford University community. And we're excited about that. There's all kinds of good stuff coming up this summer. As I mentioned, May 28th, Memorial Day, there'll be a lot of activity down at Bissett Park for the annual Memorial Day service and then at the Tribute to Heroes at Glencoe Mansion at 1 o'clock that afternoon. I hope you all can be a part of that. Sponsor flags, do whatever you're able to do to help celebrate our heroes, our veterans, our families, our friends, all the folks that we recognize through those wonderful programs. We may be a pollinator city. We thank you for coming forward with that idea and, and always feel free to bring us your concerns and the challenges. I know everybody takes notes and tries to follow up on all that and work on that. We are working hard on areas of the Riverway Trail and the park where I know you're concerned about some of the access. And I know there's been some improvement, but we need to do a little bit more and that's hopefully something that'll be coming over the next few months and be moving forward from that. We do need to take some time to move into a closed session this evening, so I'd like to make a motion that we convene a closed meeting for the purposes of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, performance of specific public officers, appointees, employees of any public body pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, and for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel specifically to obtain legal advice concerning the Ready Performance Agreement, Virginia Code Section Virginia Code Section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-eight. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please respond by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, we're going to head into closed session, thank you all for joining us.